Calling to order tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. Today is June 23rd. Happens to be my husband's birthday. Happy birthday, Joe. City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Salvia?
Here.
Bixson?
Here.
Hauser?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
King?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. It does feel good to be here in cool council chambers. It is a hot one outside. So, starting off at the top for our public comment and non-scheduled presentations, we have Patty Jacks?
Jax.
Jax, the Executive Director of Gifts for All God's Children. Patty, if you would like to approach the podium and tell us all about Gifts for God's Children.
Okay, well, first off, thank you for inviting me. We've been in Rochester a long time, but don't get the word out as much as we'd like to. So, we began, actually, 1987. I was on the original committee at Faith Troy that we sponsored 187 children at Christmas from the inner city at our church. So, we thought that was kind of all we were going to do. But now, you know, 37 years later, this past Christmas, we sponsored 3,562 children from 52 inner-city churches and ministries in Detroit, Pontiac, Flint, and a number of other areas. Actually, in this area, too. So, Christmas is our largest outreach. We are a conduit. Our mission is to be, to meet children's needs as a conduit of God's love. So, we connect. We work with big organizations like Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries. We work with small, inner-city churches that are on the corners, trying to survive, literally. And we partner with them. We help them get children back into their churches. Most of them have a few elderly people and no money, and they're sitting in those neighborhoods where the kids around them are literally perishing too, you know, lack of education. There's, I've got to go down all the inner-city community challenges, the addictions of single moms and fathers, the homelessness, the unemployment, and lack of transportation, the struggling schools, the food insecurity, limited medical and dental services, and the hopelessness. So, I've been blessed, my husband and I, to raise our kids in Rochester, in Rochester area, and I drive, you know, 25 minutes into the inner city. And it's just like you're on a different planet. You know, we are so blessed here in our kids with our schools and our neighborhoods. And I go into those neighborhoods where the houses are boarded up, or they're burnt out, or they've tore them down, so there might be empty grass there. But, so, our heart and our mission is to help those kids, give them hope, and change their lives. So, we, we reward behavior, literally. We work with the churches and the groups to help them reach out to the kids. So, we do Valentine parties and Easter fairs and summer camps, and we do field trips with the kids. And we reward behavior. When they start coming to those events or coming to the church or the groups we work with, they get put on our Christmas list to get the big bags of gifts that many of the churches and the businesses here in Rochester supply. They also get Easter baskets, and they get the backpacks and all those type of things. So, we, I really believe, of course, I'm co-founder, executive director, I'm a little partial, but there's not really a nonprofit out there that does what we do, because we are the supply line to the front lines. And our goal is for those frontline ministries to make relationships with those children. So, we don't do any freebie giveaways in the city or anywhere. We don't say, "Free, you know, backpacks come today." The children that received, receive the backpacks that we provide are referred to us by someone in that church, or the Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries, or Power Company Kids Club in Pontiac, or Good News Gang, and they know those kids. And, and like the buses from Power Company and Good News Gang go in those neighborhoods every week, and they meet with those families, and they know which kids don't have any food. And, so, we're, we are blessed to partner with all these groups that, that really know these kids, and they change lives of kids. So, that's kind of our, our whole mission. We also have a tutoring program. We have three sites. We tutor in the southwest part of Detroit. We use this iExcel curriculum. And we also, we show read, and we also tutor in East Bethlehem on the east side of Detroit, off a mound between Seven and Eight Mile. We work with the Detroit Police Precinct 11, which is right around East Bethlehem. We just did a big toy giveaway in the heat on Saturday. And, so, we are very busy all year long. And we actually rent here in Rochester. We're right downtown. You could walk almost. We rent from the Congregational Church, right where the neighbor house's food pantry is. We are on the side of that church. So, we would love to partner, we'd love to partner with anybody, actually, but we love, I know we partner with Mayor Barnett, and the city council comes and wraps gifts at Christmas for us over there. So, we would love to invite you to come, or any of your employees that want to see what we do. We have quite an operation in that, that church. So, any, that's kind of us.
Wonderful. So, how would, how would a resident or someone watching, how would they get in touch with you? Do you have a website or a Facebook page?
Yes, we do. Yes, GiftsForAllGodsChildren.org is our website. And we're open on Tuesdays and Thursdays at, you know, the Congregational Church on the side. We're Door D from 10:00 to 2:00 on Tuesdays and 10:00 to 4:00 on Thursdays. And for people to drop off, people will be at Costco, and they see winter coats for $10, so they'll buy the whole rack of them, and they bring them to us. So, we get a lot of in-kind donations, and then we purchase winter things when they're on sale, you know, like 90% off. So, if you walk in our workshop now, you'll think it's Macy's Department Store. And we're getting ready for another way, as our Christmas in July is our major fundraiser. It's actually July 15th on Tuesday night at Petrazello's. So, we're always looking for sponsors and people to come and really get to know what we do there.
Wonderful.
Hi, Debbie.
Hi. Patty, thank you for coming. I was privileged to go and look at their organization over at the church, and it's worth stopping by just to see what they do. It's amazing the amount of volunteers you have.
We have a lot of them.
Like, quote how many volunteers that you have.
Well, I've been a volunteer for 38 years. So, we finally hired our first full-time employee in November. Hallelujah. You know, she's our, our program director, so she's over all these programs now. So, we have over 200 to 300 volunteers. And at Christmas, of course, it's huge there. So, what we do at the workshop is we try to sponsor as many children of these 3,500 kids that are on our, and we have a computer database kind of thing, that you can go online and sponsor a child. And then the children that are not sponsored by the churches, schools, individuals, we shop for at a workshop. So, that's why we have all the brand-new socks, underwear, hygiene kits, clothes. And, yeah, then we go into Easter. Then we go into, you know, we are just busy like, so, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Patty. Thank you for everything. Thank you. On the second item on this agenda item is, I didn't have a chance to meet this person, is Scott Lanier. Are you here to speak? This is another nonprofit update. This is the Golden Grizzlies Pantry Manager at Oakland University. Is he here? No, I know we had some emails with him.
I think the date was in July.
So, all right, let's, we will reach out to him and find out when he can, he can show up. Next on our agenda is any public comment for anything that is not on our agenda this evening. If it's an agenda item, we ask that you hold those comments until that agenda item. So, anyone who would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda, if you could, please approach the podium.
I'm Brian Wood. I live at 520 Willcox. I was sort of volunteered by my block to come down and touch base with you guys. There's two things. 520 Willcox, right in between Seventh and University. There's two things that we're concerned about. It's the parking on our street. A lot of businesses are parking, utilizing parking on our street. I, last October, we got everyone's signatures and turned in a request for residential parking on our street. I talked to George several times, which he was fantastic, trying to navigate that with us. We talked to the businesses on University, all my neighbors did, but it's really been to no avail. And the problem primarily with the parking is we've got a lot of teenagers now, they're getting their licenses. You can only park on one side of the street, and then most of our driveways are one lane. So, when businesses constantly dump into our street, it becomes quite an issue, where our neighbors, myself, our neighbors, are having to park down the street. We don't know who's coming from the businesses, so on and so forth. So, I do have a copy of the request that I turned in. I don't know if I can leave it to the clerk.
Yep. Thank you.
So, I'd like you to, or we would like you to review that, if you can. At this point, it's more important to us that we have that parking available to us. As residents, we feel like we should, that should be distinct residential parking, because it is a residential neighborhood, and it's more important to us to have that parking than to deal with the aesthetics of putting in some signage. So, that's, that's one issue. I don't know if there's any questions.
Yeah, so this is public comment, and so the way it works is you get to make comments, and then someone will follow up with you.
Okay. Fantastic. Then, our, the second issue that they wanted me to touch base about is the, it's the Section 8 housing. I think it's all Section 8 housing on the University, which would be 532 University, 520 University, and 516 University. These houses have been in disrepair for a long time. Two or three years ago, I was having a birthday party out on my deck there, and a SWAT team came in, full gear, riot gear, bombarding those houses. The population there is very transient. From my understanding, the owner of that housing lives in Colorado. He's not vested in the community. He doesn't keep up the houses. There's everything from, I went over there, there's broken windows, there's low-voltage wiring hanging out, there's, there's a lot of siding that's missing, paint that's missing. The houses are in disrepair. They had a flagpole out there. They cut it out, but left the stump, so a kid could get impaled by it. They have a sign out there that hasn't, that's rusted out, that hasn't had a sign in it for years now. The neighborhood is very concerned about that housing, how it represents the community, the safety, and the lack of care by the owner. We've contacted the city a couple times. Some things have happened to the housing, but not nearly to the degree that we would like. So, we would like, if, if someone can look at that, or give us an avenue that, that we can be more proactive on, we would really appreciate it, because we've been going through this for, well, years now, to be honest with you. And I would say the first and foremost concern is safety. Drugs, transient culture, cars coming in and out all times of the night, swearing at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. I've called our police department. Our police department is the best police department in the world. So, I can't give them enough credit, but we've just, to no avail, has, has enough been done there. So, I appreciate the time, and I appreciate the follow-up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I will be making some comments towards the end of the meeting regarding our blight process, as will the city manager, so you may want to stay tuned either here or online. Would anyone else have other public comments?
Patricia Kane, 817 West Fourth Street, Rochester. Okay, three things, and I'm going to be real quick with this, because I don't want to stay here all night. The first thing is, and this is the humor, we're not being taken over by aliens, we're being taken over by Planning Commission. The first time in our history, half of the Planning Commission members are running for a seat for city council. That has to be noted. HOAs, all on planning, it's just something that everybody should kind of be aware of, and anybody can run, all for it. Anybody can run. But I found it interesting that five, four members, all from Planning Commission. It just thought that was a little bit funny. Next, compliments. We are approaching our fiscal year-end, correct? July 1st, we start all over again. So, just a quick recap from you, and first of all, I want to thank Mayor Bixson for all of his years when he was mayor, and Mayor Salvia. The one promise that was always made, especially by Stewart, way back when things were really even tough, he would not raise taxes, and he didn't. We have not had our taxes raised yet for services that people feel should be upgraded or that they want. Next, infrastructure. Oh my gosh, there was a time you guys were getting calls, even Nick, all the time, and everybody at City, because residents were fed up to here with all of the construction of infrastructure in the neighborhood. And you started with some of the oldest sections, and it took a long time to do in a lot of areas, and you're still continuing with infrastructure, which is very good. But you hit that head-on many years ago. I'd say we really got a good grip on it probably over 10 years ago, and it's been forward ever since. So, I compliment you on that. Even with our, what do we call them? I don't want to say hundred-year rainstorms, but we've been getting a ton of rain and everything. And even last year with these once-in-a-lifetime storms, we really did not have the problems. You're always going to get a little bit of flooding somewhere, but it was well-done, well-handled, and our infrastructure, I really think DPW and everybody for hitting it on the budget and getting things done and moving forward with it, regardless of how we complain, we are getting there beautifully, and it's been ongoing for many, many years. Next, accounting, finances. Most transparent it's been, and I'm going to compliment Anthony, but that budget gets better and better, and the adoption of a three-year forecast is a real help for a lot of us residents. We can kind of look ahead and feel where there might be a bump or a blip, but you've done very well with balanced budgets. That is another thing that this body has always promised us for years. So, our history is starting way back when, balanced budget, and working right through it. And we've hit roadblocks at times, we've hit things that we didn't expect, we've covered it. Never once did this council, or our mayor, mayors, or our previous mayors have to go and say, "We're going to raise your taxes." And that has been a boon, because property tax keeps going up, and as you know, everything else does, too. So, the accountability is there. Next, on projects. We haven't always been happy with everything, but if we wait long enough, you see the fruition of it, and you see things that are good for the community, that the community engages in. But sometimes you've got to see it set up, finished, and done, to actually see how well it works and who it services. So, I want to compliment you, because I have seen a lot of stuff be batted back and forth, like a tennis ball, before you come to an agreement, which tells me you are very thoughtful in that process. Next is the transparency. I don't know about anybody else, but I can call any one of you at any time, and I get a return phone call. I can call any one of our departments and ask a question, and I get the information. The transparency is there, and it's there very well, and it just keeps getting better and better, because we are a community with a lot of heart. Certainly, it's our money, but you also pay into it. You don't, Jeff, because you don't live here, but we do. You're odd man out again. And it thinks it makes a difference, because it's treated like it's our money, not yours, ours. And I think that's important. Looking forward on some of the big projects, we didn't always agree when residents had rough times with it, and certainly, for the first time years ago, we saw people with websites up and little signs and everything else, and we didn't always agree. But, when it came out of planning, because that's where these big projects come from, they come before you after being dissected for years, you have also given it thought, and some of it, thank goodness, you have sent back to planning. And we're grateful for that, and we know we can't stop all the progress. We know there is a means, that we do need income coming in, but at what level and for what, when we've got very thoughtful fiduciary responsibility. So, that is the compliment. Now, I just heard from mayor, and this is my last thing. This was on the blight. I did want to have that blight, two things, and I think I mentioned it a month or so ago. If it's going to come to this council, we, we, me and a few other residents would like it before we have to vote. We want to know who's going to vote for that, who's not going to vote for it. Questions are why? Because we heard discussions before, which made sense, draconian, overreach, weaponizing, and other people's visions of what they want. And I have to remind people, we don't live in a homeowners association for a lot of reasons. That's the creativity, the property. You may not like something with your neighbor has, but that doesn't mean it's wrong or blightful, and we don't want that weaponization. Actually, our ordinance with enforcement works just fine. But my questions were, the last time, or not, or comment. When it first came up, and this is months ago, before it ever had came where people saw it actually here at council, I called, when it was on the agenda, before the meeting, I called the state and the county to find out Rochester didn't have a blight problem. We have isolated cases, but the city's taking care of it. Then, at the last meeting, when I heard Nick say 121 cases separated, okay, maybe 80% commercial, that's okay, 20% residential. What's the 20%? A lot of them was grass. You're going to get it when people are on vacation, you're going to get it with a flush of growth. It's going to happen. But, we don't want to overstep, and in reading the ordinance we have, it covers everything, because the definition of blight is vacant, boarded up, abandoned, standing with broken windows and everything else, and really, that's blight. And we have to remember, we're not cookie cutter. If the city of Rochester, all of it, wanted to be an HOA or whatever, they would have moved into one, but they're not. And we don't want to target the older homes and the smaller homes. We all know where progress is hitting. We don't want to do that. We don't also want to put financial burdens on people when it really isn't necessary, because you've got to remember one thing. If it's private property, and it does not affect other people, you can't use that thing, "Oh, it affects property values." I argued for my property tax again, because it went up again, and I don't know if anybody's taxes that went down, except in a couple of million-dollar houses, who argued that they didn't want, it was too much, they got their taxes down. Mine didn't, and everybody else in my neighborhood that has smaller houses, or that we've been here a long time, our taxes has gone up every single year, consistent. So, what you're seeing in Rochester today, and you may say, "Oh, it's this," has not affected the property values at all. That's what I will say, and I think they've done a good job addressing blight as best they can. If we have a couple of isolated cases, I know the city will take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other public comment this evening?
Good evening, council. Dan Lambert, president of Story Creek Ridge Homeowners Association. And like she was mentioning, I'm here to talk about the blight ordinance. Our subdivision's located over between Parkdale and Tinkin. We have about 467 homes in our subdivision, so it's a very, very large sub. It's important to note, our sub is managed by a board of directors. We have some of our directors here tonight. These are homeowners or residents of the city that volunteer their time to be on our board. We don't have a management company. All right, so, we are, we, we run our sub, and our sub is run by bylaws that are recorded on our, on our sub, and we have to follow those. Okay? So, that's kind of our guideline, that's what we have to follow. Okay, those are the rules. And us as a board, we have to follow those rules. Okay? And, like I said, I'm here to talk about the blight ordinance tonight, because when it comes to subs like ours and our bylaws, and I've talked with Mayor, Mayor Salvia about this a little bit, is our bylaws don't allow us to find our residents if there's a blight issue. Okay? We can send them a letter, our attorney can send them a letter, and that's it. Okay? That's why we look to our city officials and our city government to help us with blight in our subdivision. Okay? And right now, we're here because we have a number of homes in our sub that are issues, and they've been going on for many, many years. And we just, we're looking for assistance from the city with these issues. Okay? Because like I said, we as a HOA, not every HOA has a strong bylaw that they can rely on. Okay? And when you come to our sub like ours, we rely on you. Okay? City manager, fire chief, to come and help us out when those, when these kind of issues arise. All right? So, I would definitely like some follow-up from the council to discuss these issues, and just to see, number one, where is the revised blight ordinance in discussion? Okay? And number two, okay, if we don't have the revised blight ordinance, if that doesn't go through, what's, what does enforcement look like going forward? Okay? What can we expect from our city officials to assist us with? All right? Because we definitely need it. So, I would just like to thank you for your time tonight, and just want to let you know that this is something that, in our view, is kind of an emergent situation that has just been kind of escalating over in our sub right now. We've got a number of homes that need to be dealt with. So, like I said, I look forward to some follow-up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our, the rest of our agenda. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. We've got three items. Consideration of a special event application from the PSD, the Principal Shopping District, to hold the Rochester Posed Event on Thursday, October 2nd. Item B is consideration to approve the Rochester Nazarene Bash in the Park. This is actually an event that will be held on three separate dates, July 30th, August 6th, and August 13th. And we have receipt of the check register report. Council. Councilmember Jones.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Jones, support by Trent.
Support.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda passes. We have no old business, we have no public hearings, and moving on to legislative deliberation. This is consideration to approve the addendum to the existing library services contract with the Rochester Hills Public Library. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. Tonight is kind of a stopgap measure that we've been working on with the library board. Real appreciate Juliana's leadership there. Today, we got the last draft back of the permanent agreement. They've agreed to all of our terms. Attorney Crotwell over this afternoon. We have to change a couple of things in it, sent back, but we've come to an agreement. In order to ensure that we do not have any disruption of our library services, our contract is up with them June 30th. So, they asked for us tonight to approve an extension to December 30th of this year, knowing that at the next meeting, we'll be bringing the permanent new contract that we negotiated with them. So, tonight would be, Juliana didn't even show up, because she knew that this is something we both want. They've agreed to it. Their board has agreed to it. She delivered that message, and that's what we're asking for tonight, for us to approve this agreement. And then, next meeting, we expect to bring back the full agreement.
Great, so this is really housekeeping tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, city council? Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I'm really glad we're not going to have any disruption of library services, so I will make a motion to approve the addendum to extend the existing library services contract.
Motion by Trent, support by Sage. Any other discussion? City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Motion passes. I look forward to the next discussion on it. All right, item B. This is consideration of a resolution and ordinance for the city to participate in fire insurance withholding program. We'd had some discussion on this a couple meetings ago, and asked to table it and have administration come back. Fire chief with some more information, so I think this is the bring-back. So, fire chief, if you want to give us an update on this, please.
Thank you, mayor, council. We did check with some local other cities and municipalities. About 50% of the people I spoke to do take advantage of the resolution in regards to the insurance. They found it fairly easy to go ahead and administer. They do it in cooperation with the property owner to go ahead and render the site safe. I'll give you an example is we're finally getting to the point to tear down the house on Alice Street that we had to fire almost eight months ago. Took a very extended amount of time working with the insurance company. But had we had this resolution, we could have at least very quickly put up a fence to go ahead and protect the area from our residents wouldn't wander in or kids. And so city, the city attorney has done some research into the language. And maybe I can turn it over to Attorney Crotwell, and he can reference some of the suggested changes that are, that we have for you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So one of the asks at the couple meetings ago was should we put something in the ordinance that puts people on notice that we are, that the city is a participant in this? And most communities that are participants, they didn't, I wasn't able to find many that actually put something in their ordinances because it's simply by resolution, tapped into it with the state. But I did find one that I thought was probably what I expected, which is a simply to say, by the way, the city is a participant. So one of the things in your packet today that wasn't in your packet last time because I prepared it since then is a simple ordinance. And it is in the Fire Prevention and Protection, Chapter 22 of the city code. And there's a proposed additional Section 22-1, which simply puts participation in fire insurance withholding program. And it goes through the, the act and what it was and when the city council agreed to, agrees to adopt it. Obviously, I have June blank in there, thinking it may be today. But, and then just how it references the statute if people have more questions. And so it's just simply a public recognition that the city is a participant. One thing you did see the last time was what the, what the state will require for the fire insurance withholding program, which is the resolution. That didn't change. It's simply, here's the program the city wants to opt in. And that's what the, the program requires of the city. So I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward as far as how to, we just need a resolution. And if council wants to proceed with the ordinance to, to make, put it in the books, that's, that's fine, too. It's not a zoning matter. So the requested action today would be to, one, to pass the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution, so that the fire department can send that away to, to be registered, and then to move the ordinance for first reading and introduction with the intent to come back at the, the next meeting for second reading and adoption. So other than that, there wasn't a whole lot of, I know, talking to the fire chief, it's been, it's been a good program for municipalities. And it does, it's not an abrasive, the city doesn't, doesn't keep any of the money. It, all it has to do is establish an escrow account. So after a period of time, the fire insurance proceeds, 10% would be put in to this escrow account to handle such things as making it safe. And if the city is required, as part of the program is required to return any money that it's not used, once the project is completed, or if the city needs to use them because it's not being completed, then it would refund the difference. So the city makes no money on this at all. This is not a moneymaker. It's a, we're holding this to make sure that the contractors, the homeowners are moving forward at a pace that is deemed reasonable. And I would say it doesn't really trigger until 120 days. So it's not like it, we get the money tomorrow if there's a thing. So it gives the homeowner and the insurance company time to, because it is a process of going through and figuring out what the agreement would be as to what the amount is, then that's when the 10% would then come to the city at some point, so.
Okay. Chief, anything you want to add?
About 10 years ago or 11 years ago, this originally came to council. And at that time, our recommendation was not to support, that we didn't feel we needed it. But things have changed in the last 10 to 12 years with insurance companies. We now find that insurance companies are looking to go ahead and find somebody else to take the loss. And I'm sure Mayor Protem Bixson would tell you about the house across from his, that took well over a year to get through the insurance process before it was even touched. And in that case, we could have at least cleaned the site up, got a fence put up, and all those things with this funding. So that's why when this came up, opportunity came up, it was sent around, that I talked to the city attorney and I said, you know, we didn't support this like 12 years ago, but I'm thinking we probably need to bring it to council now to protect the citizens, the, the neighborhoods and the residents when we do have a fire. And trust me, I've outlawed fires as much as I can here in the city.
Thank you.
So we don't, don't allow those. But when we do have a lawbreaker from having a fire, and I don't mean a lawbreaker, I mean that we go ahead and have a way to protect, really not only the person who's had the fire, to protect the residents so that they don't get sued, but also to go ahead and prevent things such as having houses sit there for extended periods of time as an eyesore and also as a safety hazard. So the city attorney did a lot of work to go ahead and find these things. And so my recommendation for council is to consider adopting this resolution.
Okay, thank you. So the action requested from council is to twofold, pass the resolution as well as if we want to change Section 22, Chapter 22, to put that forward for first reading and introduction. So council, any motions on this? Councilmember Jones?
I have a question. Can I do that now or after the motion?
Normal protocol is we have a motion, and then we discuss the motion.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Bixson?
I will make a motion to...
Pass the resolution.
Thank you. Pass the resolution. And then to look at for first reading and adoption at the next meeting.
Thank you. So we'll get a second bite at this. So motion by Bixson, support by Hauser. Now we can ask questions and discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones, you have the floor.
I, the question I have is, our citizen, the resident that owns a home is told that they would be, we would be participating in this. We're just not taking 10% of the insurance money.
No, we would, we would always work with the resident, let them know what we're doing, why we're doing it. And as the city attorney said, we'll spend only what money is needed to either render the site safe. And all, that money is held in a separate account. And I guess I haven't talked to City Finance Director Maggio, but I believe it would be held separately. And then whatever is not used then is returned to the insurer.
Okay. So in that case, I'm not sure if we need an ordinance because I don't know why we have to state we're participating in this program when we tell the resident that we're participating in this program that's involved by it. So I'm okay either way on it, but I, I think it's, it's not necessary. Because they're going to know. It's not, you know, they're partnering in with us, so.
Well, the piece is, is that the insurance company actually will go ahead and send the check automatically to the city without the approval of the insurer because we're participating.
So they know we're participating, but they don't...
Yeah. So, so the point, that point would be that if we pass, if the council passes the resolution, then we then send a notice to the insurance board in the state of Michigan. We then get registered. Once we're registered, then all insurance companies will get that list, and then they know that that's what happens. In fact, the house that we had on Highland about eight or nine months ago, I got a phone call from Oakland Township, and they said, hey, thanks for the $60,000 because they inadvertently sent a check to them because Oakland Township participates, but we don't. So I had to let them know that they needed to return that money to the insurance, to the property owner. So this is just the first step. Council, consideration, and if approved, and then we have to register with the state.
Okay. Councilmember King?
I wanted to clarify, I believe in reading this fire withholding, or fire insurance withholding program, it says 25%. There's been talk of 10%. Is it 10 or 25%?
It should be 10%.
I believe it's 10%.
25, 25, 25.
I, yes, actually, I think the councilmember King is right. I don't know why I said 10%. But that was, for some reason, that was in my mind. But it's, it's 25%. Huh, I don't know why I said 10%. But I will, one thing I forgot to say is that, let's say that the, it's under construction, the, you know, it's not a hardened fax. If it doesn't get completed within that time, then, then, you know, we, that's it, we have to do the work. If they're making progress, you know, sufficient for us, then that's okay. And we actually have to return the money, send to the contractor to finish the job. If that's the only work has to be done, is the one that's going to be paid by the remaining funds. So we're not, the, the, my point is, the homeowner isn't, doesn't have to front the money that they would otherwise get in the insurance. When it gets to the point where the only work remaining is going to be covered by the cost that we have, we have to turn the money over so it can be finished. I forgot to mention that. So thank you for that opportunity.
Councilmember King?
Sorry, I have a couple other things. So help me understand, because to me, like, the issue here is that insurance settlements can take a very long time to settle, right? But if the insurance settlement hasn't settled, how does this help us? If they're, if it's fighting for a year or two, how does it help us secure the property if we haven't received the funds?
Because it gives us a little bit more authority to go back to the insurance company and impose rules on them to go ahead and protect the site from us.
But, so are they going to actually advance money ahead of a settlement? Because it's not going to settle until the homeowner necessarily agrees.
That depends on how the insurance is written for each piece of property. An example is, is it took about two or three months to go ahead and get even a point of putting a fence up on the property on Alice Street with working with the insurance company and the property owner. So it just gives us a little bit more leverage to go ahead and negotiate those things.
City Attorney, you have something to add?
If I could just add on to that? That, that's right. Because the city, otherwise, yes, we have a overall municipal impact, but when we're supposed to be getting the funds from a payout and they're not doing what we think they should be doing, there's a mechanism of if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, is a complaint process with the regulators, and they don't want that. So this, you know, it, not that insurance companies try to take advantage of people, but it's, it's harder if you have a fire chief who's trying to get a hold of the insurance company and say, well, we don't really want to report this to the regulators. I, I think at least the money, because it's usually not securing it that's going to be in dispute, it's the extent. So everyone, I, I would imagine that the first money saying, okay, is to secure the project. So I anticipate that there would be some type of letting of some of the funds while it's being negotiated.
Yeah, that's good clarification. Thank you. Councilmember King, you still got the floor.
Okay. Will this go for public comment?
When we, if we vote to have this go to first reading and introduction, people can make public comment at the next meeting, yes.
Okay. I, I guess my view, I'm very concerned about this. I don't, I'm concerned with us taking 25% of a settlement and holding that and controlling a homeowner's insurance claim money and how that might impact them in the process. I fortunately have not been through this process, so there's probably a lot of legalities and things that I don't know and understand. But it really concerns me of taking the control away from homeowners. And I feel like maybe that's some overreach. I know other communities are doing this, and I want us to be safe and protect. But I'm really concerned about this. I expressed that, you know, the last time around. I, I will not support it without further view and input from the public. That's my personal view.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
We don't control it, we just hold it. And as the Attorney Crot mentioned, we work with the contractor that they actually making sure that things get finished and things. So it's not as if we're holding anything up or that we're holding the resident's home whose damage in the fire hostage. This is a, a simple means of making sure that things get completed.
Right, that's what I...
Okay. Mayor Protem Bixson?
Yeah, I think I mentioned it last time, the house across the street from me sat vacant for eight months with burned out stuff. No offense, because the chief couldn't, and, and the resident wanted to do something, but they couldn't because the insurance company wouldn't do this. To me, this gives the city some leverage to get the insurance company moving, to get the basics. I mean, we're not rebuilding their house. We're just looking to clean it up, put a fence around it, and not have it be a blight, which we're all talking about all the time. So to me, I saw firsthand of what it is, and, you know, these, and to me, these insurance companies are getting worse and worse, worser and worser. So I, I absolutely support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I understand Councilmember King's concerns, and Councilmember Jones brought it up as well. But as I learn more about this, and you have more case studies of when a city doesn't have the leverage that they need, and I know Chief Sizlick explained that 10 years ago, you said no, correct? You said no? And now you're saying you've come into issues where you need a little muscle or leverage to, for an insurance company. And I bet you, they know, and they look it up to see, is it an, is this an ordinance? Do you have any leverage? Do you have any type of ordinance that lets the city have a say when the, when the insurance company isn't moving as fast as, as maybe many people would hope they would? So maybe those people go on the back burner, and the ones with the ordinance go on the front burner. That's my, and I would say, I understand the issues, and I, I am for it.
Good, thank you. Councilmember King?
Do we, do we pick the 25%? Is that set by the state? Like, how is that determined?
That, that is part of the, that is part of the statute and part of the state process. The insurance company has to do that. It's not something that we've chosen. It's not, you know, you can do five or 20. I mean, this, the program is, is the 20%, or 25%.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Selby.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Motion passes, and so we will have a first reading and adoption at the next meeting.
Thank you for your consideration, Council.
Thank you. The motion passed. Is it on another agenda item, or we're moving on to the next agenda item?
I have a question about the reading and what happens next on this one.
Okay, so you have a process question on what happens next? Okay.
Since we are voting on two things, does the resolution need public comment, or does just the ordinance change need public comment? Because there's two different things we just voted on, correct?
City Attorney?
So any agenda item can take public comment. There's a difference between a public comment and public hearing. So the public can comment on any agenda item when, when it's, according to your code, when it's being considered. So while the next one isn't being set for a public hearing, it is a, it's an opportunity that's going to be on the agenda, so the public can make comments on, on any agenda item when it's being considered.
So this will be on the next agenda possibly, then?
The, the ordinance, you just passed the resolution.
Right.
But the ordinance would come back for a second reading and adoption consideration at that point.
That's what I thought. There was two separate things there. Okay, thank you.
So first meeting in July.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and regular business. City Clerk, City Attorney, I wanted to give the report out from the Parking Advisory Board, which is in Section 10, before we go into this, since we have three items on the parking that are on our agenda. Can I just move that, or do we need to make a motion to?
You may take liberty.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Counsel, I'm going to take liberty, so we can talk about parking before we talk about the agenda items that are on parking. So, so Parking Committee is comprised of myself, Councilmember Sage, City Administration, we have a resident member, we have a business owner, and we have a Planning Commissioner. And so the Parking Committee met on June 10th. Chief George and Dave Custer were there. To begin with, we talked about that they had just returned that day from a convention, so they were there learning and getting some best practices about parking and parking systems. They talked about goals, things that they have achieved in 2025, gave us an update on the 685 delinquent tickets that were collected upon for $27,000. New business, we talked about the online portal for parking passes. We talked about, this is an agenda item that we have tonight, the ticket validation discount programs. This would be for business owners that kind of pre-purchased parking. They would get, like, I'm going to call it a volume discount if they buy a group of them. So that'll be on our agenda here coming up. Talked about their presentation at the Roxy. They're going to do that again, just really talking to the business owners, a forum for them to educate. We have a new parking website. They're continuing to make updates to it. Also on our agenda tonight is to add a grace period parking for the parking meter. So this was received very favorably by the Parking Committee. We talked about EV parking. Where should EVs be allowed? Where do we need EV parking? So we're going to have more discussion regarding that. There's a lot of factors regarding EV parking in terms of safety and using it also as a kind of a business development aspect while people are charging their vehicles. And then we talked about part-time parking enforcement officer. This is also on our agenda tonight. Chief made a case for a part-time parking enforcement officer. We had a board vote on this. The vote, the board, the board voted in favor to move this to City Council. The two council members, including myself, did not support this. But I wanted Council to know that Parking Committee, they wanted to bring this forward to us. Next, we talked about some, I'll say, new technology. We're looking to pilot a program where instead of using parking meters, we would use QR codes. So you'd scan the QR code and park your vehicle. So that's technology that doesn't break, and you don't need replacement parts. So I think, at least I'm kind of excited about piloting that in one of our lots. We spent a lot of time talking about something that Roger Knapp, one of the business owners, longtime business owner, is very passionate about, which is what I'm calling is a parking system audit. I think it speaks a little bit to some of the public comments that were made earlier about where in our parking system do we allow permit parking, residential parking, as we have businesses change in the, in the community. Do we have the right amount of spaces? I know Planning Commission has had those questions. So there'll be some work done offline on that, and then Parking Committee will talk about that. Are there any changes that need to be discussed? Last two items, one is we went through the budget. As resident Pat Kane said, we're coming into fiscal year end. So this was almost the complete budget cycle for the parking system. I think our goals have always been for parking for it to be break even. So this is a revenue fund that the people and businesses that use the system pay for it. In terms of revenues, the parking system has brought in 2.1 million, that's the forecast, through the end of the fiscal year. And we have 1.94 million in expenses. So that's a little over 100,000, 124,000 in revenue. That does include the full 325,000 from the DDA, and it does not include dollars for any future technology. So if we needed a new parking meter system, or if we needed a new gate system, or something changed. So as always, we're watching those budget numbers, and then we will be having a next meeting in about 30 to 60 days. That is my Parking Committee report out. Okay, moving on to Item A on the agenda. So this is also on parking. So this is Chief George, if you want to be ready for this one. Recommend bringing back the 10-minute grace period on parking meters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was going to do a brief PowerPoint that would
Cover everything I just did?
Cover E, B, and C.
Go for it.
Just not get out that way.
Go for it.
This is a very, very powerful, so I'll just get your copy.
Pass him down.
Turn on the PowerPoint.
I was going to say. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So Chief, this is going to be a presentation for Agenda Items A, B, and C, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I see it behind the scenes there.
Okay, we're almost there.
There we go. You want to put it in slideshow mode there on the top? There we go.
I was, yeah.
Nice.
Okay. So, I promise to be brief. So when we think parking, two years ago, when I started here, it'd be two years Thursday.
Wow, congrats.
When I envision parking, you see a parking meter, and you see dollar signs next to it. You think revenue, 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 revenue. And what I've learned in two years, it's nothing about that. It's nothing. There's so many parts to parking that people don't understand. Number one, you have the maintenance on the meters every day. Every single day there's maintenance on the meters. They have to be rebooted. There has to be batteries placed in the new meters, or actually the existing meters. There's collections. We collect from the meters once or twice a week, depending on our staff. That takes about 10 hours. You also have the customer service portion, and then you have enforcement. If you want to have a well-balanced program, all the parts have to work together. If you pull one out, it's not going to work properly. But it's not, the, the point I want to make here, it's not all about revenue. These are some of the things I talked about, daily meter maintenance, the collections, responding to complaints and special events. Enforcement is just one part of it. Okay, first of all, just a little background. Right now, we have one full-time parking enforcement officer, and we have one part-time officer. So I call it 1.5 for staffing. And you'll see in the next slide, if you look at the current schedule for parking enforcement officers, there's an 85 to 90 hour per month deficit in operations. There's a gap, meaning we cannot fill every hour of enforcement. Our enforcement hours are usually 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. We cannot fill all those hours with 1.5 parking officers. And in addition, we have no contingency plan for any type of absence. So if one of our parking officers, and we just had it, he was off for two months with some personal issues that he had to get taken care of, we had no contingency plan for that. So this is, if you look at the top row, that is our current schedule for parking enforcement. You'll see, now, this is a two-week schedule. Notice that Sunday's not on there, because Sunday there's no enforcement hours. So just hypothetically, Monday, today's Monday, there's an hour gap. There's no enforcement for one hour. Tuesday's one hour, Wednesday hour. Thursday, there's a four-hour gap. And Friday, there's a four-hour gap. Saturday, there's a 12-hour gap. Nobody's working this Saturday, so there's a 12-hour gap. And when I say 12 hours, that means enforcement starts at 11, it ends at 11. That's where we come up with the 12 hours. The following week, we alternate days. So if you look, there's the numbers where there's gaps. So the total gap for, is for two weeks is 45, 45 hours. That's 90 hours per month, where there's no enforcement. And again, it's not just about enforcement, it's about the maintenance of the meters, collections.
Oh, that's right.
That's the whole ball of wax. If we were to hire a part-time officer, just 20 hours, you'll see this gap, how it gets reduced from 45 hours every two weeks to 10 hours every two weeks. If we increase this part-time officers to 28 hours, usually that's the norm, 28, 29 hours, there will only be four hours a week, every two weeks for gap. So eight hours a month, which we can easily manage. But right now, what I wanted to get across, with the staffing levels we have, there's 45 hours every two weeks gap, no enforcement, no maintenance. With the, with the part-timer, with 20 hours, at work in 20 hours, there's 10 hours. And then if we increase hours to 28, it's only four hours.
Ask a question.
Sure.
So like that Saturday, if there's no, nobody doing it, and a meter doesn't work, do they call the police, or it's just that doesn't work that day?
Sometimes they'll call Dave at home. He'll give them some tips how to do things. But no, it's, if the meter's not working, it's not working. We'll address it on Monday.
Thank you.
And I can answer questions at the end. We're just, yeah, I'll answer all the questions you want. Just so we can get through this real quick. So the solution is, what I'm asking for is one part-time parking officer. There are no benefits to this position. There are no legacy costs. I will assure you, this position will pay for itself in four months. Everything after that is, I don't want to say profit, but the position will pay for itself based on the studies that we have done with our current parking enforcement officers. And it, it basically just supports the continuity and efficiency of the program. This, this is kind of going to be my, my conclusion, but I can go over this real quick. You know, and here's what I want to get, get across. Again, what we're looking for, we have made so many changes to this parking program. We have made a lot of changes, and they're very positive changes. We've looked at so many different things. We just went to this convention a couple weeks ago. We learned a lot of things. We met all our vendors. And we're doing all the right things here in Rochester. We really are. I mean, we have all new technology in our decks. Our meters are fairly new. We have our parking enforcement officers that we have out there. They do a great job. Dave's been outstanding in his position. We have a great rapport with our vendors. We answer, you know, if a customer has a complaint, within 24 hours, that complaint is resolved. So overall, we have a great program. There's, but there's a few things that we have to tweak. And I assure you, once we make these few tweaks, you're not going to see me up here for a long time talking about parking. So just to let you know, what we do for our public, because we are a user-friendly town, a lot friendlier than other places that I've talked to. So several of our parking lots in town here, it's free parking. There's several lots in town where you can park for free. Our decks, the first hour is free. And after that's a dollar 25 an hour. We have no meter fees on Sundays or holidays. If you have a handicap sticker, you don't pay for parking if you're parking at a meter. We're going to work on this 10-minute grace period. Hopefully that, something gets approved tonight. And we, we void 600 tickets a year. A lot of these tickets that we void is because we listen to the customer. If the customer says, hey, I paid for my meter, and I went back two minutes later, and I received a ticket, we can check that out easily. And, you know, I'm not going to make somebody pay $20 after you just, in good faith, you paid for your meter and you were two minutes late. That doesn't make sense. So we discussed this 10-minute grace period at the PAC meeting. The PAC recommended it. Lot of our complaints that we get on our meters, and we have 700 parking meters in town, if you want to know. We have 700 meters. The majority of the complaints that we get from our customers is, I came back to my car, and I received a ticket one to five minutes after I just paid for three hours. And Dave, he does, he just doesn't believe you. He goes in and he investigates, and he gets back with the customer. And yeah, that's, that's a very legit complaint, and that's true. It's not like our guys are lying in wait. They just strategically work areas, and they just walk up and down the street. If the meter's expired, it's expired. But if we had a grace period, we could probably eliminate a lot of complaints, a lot of complaints. And it just shows you, it shows the customer that the city is working in good faith with them. The 10-minute thing, I'm not in agreement with. I like a five minutes. But, you know, that's all, the council will have the final decision. Because I think five minutes is, is a nice number, but 10's even better. So again, we'll reduce complaint, complaints, it improves fairness. There's really no cost to the city. All we have to do is call Civic Smart, that's our meter vendor, and say, hey, Council approve, I'll write a memo, Council approve that we implement a 10-minute grace period, and they can do it matter, in a matter of one day with no cost attached to that. We have a, right now, we have a ticket validation program here. This is something new. When we first initiated this program, there was no discount offered to the businesses. So it was kind of a pilot program. And we've had this program in, it's been in place for several months now. And the unfortunate thing is, we thought it was a great idea, but there's only one business that took advantage of it. They were buying several tickets for their customers, you know, to say, hey, come on down, and I'll, I'll take care of your parking. That's a great thing for a business owner to do for their customers. Well, we've met a lot of the business owners at the Roxy, when we did our talk there, and just going back and forth to the different businesses and talking to them. The main reason why they're not participating, because they want a discount rate. And typically, when you do a, a ticket validation program, it involves a discount rate. That's why people get involved with it. So this is what we proposed at the, at the Parking Advisory Meeting. So if you buy up to 25 tickets a business, you see three hours here. Remember, the first hour is free. So you're really buying two, two hours. So it only costs $2, so you're saving 50 cents a ticket. If you go 26 tickets to 50, you're paying a dollar 90, you're saving 60 cents. And if you're, if you buy 51 tickets over and over, it's a dollar 75 for the cost. So you're saving 75 cents. So for instance, I gave you a business like the Roxy. They have, they have concerts here on the weekends. They have a lot of people, a couple, 300 people. So as a business, business owner, I would say, hey, you know, I'm going to do, you guys buy tickets, you want to come and enjoy the night, parking's on me. I think that's a great thing, and that gets around. That's what they're looking for. It's not a big discount, but it's something. And again, we have nothing right now. So here's what I want to say. I think the grace period's self-explanatory. I think you understand fully about the tiered ticket program. Nobody's buying into it. I think if we offer a discount rate, it would change. I think the biggest thing here is the part-time parking enforcement officer. I think what you got to look at is, what does the city have to lose if we hire somebody? Give me one reason what we have to lose. We have nothing to lose. It's not going, when it, when it's, after four months, we'll be even. After that, it pays for that position. All I have to do is buy this person a uniform and provide training. That's it. No benefits, nothing. No medical, nothing. No 401s. So, many things that we can gain. First of all, we're going to fill all the voids in the parking schedule. You'll have zero voids in that parking schedule I just showed you. All the, every single meter in town here, the 700 meters, they will be maintained in accordance to the schedule without any type of interruptions in service. All our collections will be conducted without delay. We'll have a succession plan in place. If somebody leaves us suddenly, maybe they want to go somewhere else, maybe they want to retire, at least we'll have somebody in place that's trained that can take over those duties and responsibilities. The scheduling will be much easier. It'll be favorable. And one thing, too, is, you know, you'll notice some of these, there's two voids on Saturdays. You might say, hey, Chief, why, why are there, why, how come nobody's working on Saturday? Well, when I put out the position, there's only a few people that apply for the position. And nobody wants to work every Friday and Saturday. And if we want to retain employees here, we have to do our best to work with them with the scheduling. And this works for them. If they had to work every weekend, they would go somewhere else, guaranteed. We talked about revenues. Our revenues will definitely increase. We'll receive fewer customer complaints. And the main thing is, we're just going to continue maintaining the standards of our services that the people in Rochester and our customers deserve. So again, I, I just don't see why we wouldn't do this. It just makes sense. You know, I've put a lot of things in a play here so far since I've been here. I don't think I've been wrong on anything. I think, if anything, I made some adjustments. And let's say this doesn't work. Let's say after four, let's say six months, it's not working. You let the person go, simple as that. It'd be like a pilot program. You know, and again, we, we have nothing to lose. And I'm trying to make this program, we've, we've made so many positive changes, and we're almost there. We did the coll... We did the collections. That's working very well. We changed the meter times. We adjusted rates. We have new technology. We're trying to do all the right things. We're almost there. And if, if this goes tonight, again, I don't, I have nothing more to talk to you about with parking. We can talk about something else. Dave can talk to you if you want to hear. He's got a few. We checked with other, two other police agencies, their model. If you want to see a few things about their model, Dave, if that's up to you.
So the first one is a larger city. They're about double the size. They have 1,300 meters. They have one full-time parking enforcement officer, one 30-hour parking enforcement officer, four 25 parking enforcement hour employees. They have a parking manager. They have a, somebody that handles all the parking permits. They have a lot of people moving parts in that system. They're double our size. The other one is half our size, 300 meters. And they have one parking manager. They have one full-time maintenance manager. And then four part-time parking enforcement officers that work 25 hours a week. So that's quite a bit more than what we have right now and how we're operating our system. So there's two extremes. There's the lower end and the higher end. We fall in the middle and we're definitely understaffed. We're trying to make the system better and we're working tirelessly, the chief and I, every day to make it better. And this would help us tremendously with just daily function, just getting meters fixed. I can't always get out there. I used to do it. I'm in a different role now. And I just can't, I can't get out there as much as I can. So we need that help to make sure these meters are working properly and the people have the system in place that is supposed to be in place.
All right. I guess council, questions on the three agenda items and then we'll, we'll take each one individually. Councilmember Jones?
Okay, on, on all three. Okay.
So do you have questions on the presentation? So let's start.
What's in here? Okay. First off, it is much appreciated how much you've done on parking. So it, there's been incredible positive changes. I went to the Roxy. That was a great gathering of residents to explain, because it does get a little confusing there. It's been changed. So I really appreciate all of that. I love the validation period and the 10-minute grace. I know it said in something that I read that was in the packet, that we used to have this, but it was taken off. Do you know why that happened?
I don't.
Was that before you came?
Because we have new meters. We purchased new meters. And I don't think they were compatible with changing the, putting the grace period in there. I think that was the main reason.
So I really like that that is back. So I'm concerned about a couple of things, but I do have a couple of quick questions before. So RJ Parker, does he do any ticket writing at all?
He does not. He writes tickets here and there. He writes different types of parking tickets. If somebody calls up and says, hey, someone's blocking my sidewalk with their vehicle or somebody's parked in front of a fire hydrant. Or sometimes he responds to runs in the alleys when we have the business people, the trucks in there blocking the alleys. He manages those types.
So he's not on a patrol to walk downtown and do tickets? That's not part of his job description? And the same thing with Dave. He doesn't go out and write tickets?
Here and there, he does. I even write a few tickets myself. So we all try to chip in.
So the thing that concerns me is that now we're being compared to Royal Oak. That you park in Rochester and you're getting a ticket. And I guess I feel like I do want to keep it organized. You want, if they, you know, if their meter runs over, I get why they get a ticket. But if people are complaining because it's one minute over, then you've got some people out there writing tickets. So I just feel like we have to be very cautious what we're doing here. And you said you don't want to, it's not revenue producing, but we're going to make $100,000 this year in parking. So we're okay. Like, we're doing okay in the parking, thanks to you and all of what you've done. I don't, I feel like we're starting to become that city that gives tickets out. I've had friends having dinner and, you know, they put in the full-time. We run over a little bit, they've got a ticket. Yeah, I just don't think that's, and let me just finish.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, okay. Because I want the answer to that. You respond to that.
Our parking officers have no idea when money went in that meter. They have no idea. As all they do is walk down the street. They see the, the meter's expired. That is it. They have no idea when that individual.
No, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, that means that there's a lot of walks down the street giving tickets to catch it like that. I, I know they don't know. And then my other question is, so they, I know that the officer that comes in at 7, parking doesn't start till 11. So the first tickets wouldn't happen till after 11. I know he's emptying meters. So he has four hours' worth of emptying meters.
And rebooting meters.
So he doesn't give tickets during those four hours, that whole time?
The tickets start at 11, yes. So four hours a day, he's collecting or rebooting meters and changing batteries. Then the enforcement starts maybe at 11 o'clock if he gets his work done.
So then the one, the days that it's 9:00 AM, he's not taking, collecting from all the meters then? If it takes four hours? Or does it just run into giving ticket time?
For instance, today, I'll just give you a hypothetical. Today, we had a report over the week, over the weekend, there were 65 meters that had to be rebooted. That takes a long time to go to every single meter and reboot 65 meters. Then when that's done, that's when you start your normal enforcement.
Okay. I welcome further discussion, but I'm very concerned that we're becoming a ticket-writing town. And I, you know, we compete with the village and the village doesn't even have parking meters. So I am ver, I am very concerned about the response I've gotten from residents, that that's the direction we're going. So right now, I'm a no on another officer. That just means more tickets being written. We're making money. But I welcome other discussion to see where I land. So.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I have a question about the four-month cost. So does that mean, like, I don't know, ballparking 20 hours a week? I mean, I don't see any numbers, so I'm just going to make some guesses.
We can average, we'll say 25 hours a week.
Yeah?
25 hours a week, yes.
And then, and then, what is that, like, $2,000 a month or, and then you're, is that, does that make up the whole year? Like, if you're saying that four months caught, it's, it's gonna, he's covered, he or she, is their salary or their, their cost is covered in four months for the year?
Yes. We'd be even after four months.
For the full 12 months?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So if somebody isn't around on Saturday, are there, what type of complaints are you getting? I mean, are people, what?
Well, first of all, there's nobody enforcing the meters. So you can go park at any meter. If it's expired, it's expired.
But there wouldn't be a complaint about that?
No, but sometimes their meters are broke. Some, there's coin jams in them. Sometimes people have issues with their credit card. It may not connect. So they, they call the police department and the dispatcher does their best to give the proper, you know, answers, response rather.
Well, you have done a great job. I, I, truly, truly, this is light years from what, I don't know, light years, but it has come a long way. I mean, we've doubled the fines from $10 to $20. We've increased the cost, the hourly cost, cost from a dollar to a dollar 25. So even that would add revenue without even having your parking attendants do such a good job. And your Roxy presentation was really good. I, I just feel like there really hasn't been enough time that has gone by that would, would warrant another, unfortunately, a part-time meter parking attendant. I wished I could. I understand the gap. And maybe further down the road or in the next budget, it would make more sense. But I do absolutely admire everything you guys are doing with parking.
Thanks. And one thing we have to look at too is our capital improvement. If we put together a capital improvement plan with the Department of Public Works, we have a lot of lots in town that need repair. You're talking 100, $200,000 a lot. Do we have the money for that? I don't know. I mean.
But, but, but let me, let me correct you a little bit on that. So in our budget is the parking lot maintenance. So that is in there.
Yes.
What is missing is improvements in technology.
Correct.
So, just one question please. So the goal is to get people to put in that $1.25, whatever way they do it. A coin, probably not. That's the goal. So when I keep hearing, we're going to make revenue, I don't, I think that that's another goal, but I don't want that to be the first goal. Because obviously, you know, you could, you could make money with, and you have. And people do need to pay. I mean, the issue is, people need to pay for their parking, when they're parking there. And I have, and I really love this 10-minute grace period because I have been standing in the city's offices when some nice little old lady comes running in. Doesn't have to be a little old lady. I'm just kind of exaggerating. But she comes, and she is just so upset that she is a law-abiding citizen and she just missed it by a few minutes. And, you know, it kind of ruins people's day. So you don't want that to happen. We're just trying to get them to, to keep up with when they pay their.
But we do work with people like that, all, every day, all day.
Good.
And again, probably 35%, maybe 40% total is enforcement. Another 35% is maintenance and collections on the meters. Then you have customer service. That's the remainder. So again, it's not, we don't focus on enforcement. It's not all about enforcement. Again, we have to have these meters working so people can use them.
Which begs the question is, why aren't they working? I mean, where is that person, the vendor who created these, to explain what is going on with their meters? That I saw the list of the meters that are breaking all the time.
If you don't use a meter for three or four days, it doesn't communicate. It's just like, almost like a cellphone. Once in a while, you have to reboot your cellphone. And as soon as you reboot it, the meters, let me, let me go back. Let's say the meters will work. If they're not communicating, they will work. They will accept coins. But if you put your credit card in there, it'll still work. But your credit card information remains in limbo until that meter is reset. That could be three, that could be four days. So as a customer, I'm going to, wait a minute, I used my credit card four days ago. Why isn't, you know, why isn't it, the transaction posted? So that's, that's just one issue. Then you have the battery issues, you know. Usually a meter, they can go two, three months. It depends on the weather. If it's colder months, you have to replace them more. And it just, that's just technology, you know. But overall, the meters in itself, they're, they're good meters. They're very good meters.
Okay. So any other comments on Chief George and Ordnance Officer Custer's presentation on the parking system? Or should we move on to the agenda items? Councilmember King?
Just a question and comment, comment. I do want to thank you. I've heard from a couple of residents and, and other community members of how wonderful your enforcement officers or the people working in the office have been about, you know, issues that have come up. They've used the app to pay and it was registered to the wrong license plate and they got a ticket, but they had paid for the meter. And the city was very good about refunding them. Couple similar instances. So thank you for that. I did have a question though about the current parking enforcement officers with the part-time schedules, would, are they receiving benefits and other things that the new person would not be? Are, do they have other roles and responsibilities within the city that justify that? Just curious if you can clarify.
We, as I said before, we have, we have one full-time parking enforcement officer. That individual receives benefits. The part-time code enforcement, and I should say park enforcement officer does not receive benefits. So if we hired an additional part-timer, they also would not receive benefits because they're part-time status.
Okay. Counsel, agenda item A, this is to approve implementing the Parking Advisory Committee recommendation to bring back the 10-minute grace period on parking meters. I see Councilmember King, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jones?
So we have to do a motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I would like to make motion to approve implementing a 10-minute grace period on the parking meters.
Okay. So motion by Jones.
I support.
Support by Trent. Any discussion? City Clerk, the roll call.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. And, and to clarify, that is the 10-minute grace period on the meters. But if you're using Park Mobile, you're going to get your alert and so you need to put more funds in there. There is no 10-minute grace period on the Park Mobile on your phone.
Is that correct, Dave? When you talk to them, that's correct.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay.
Is, is there a way for there to be?
The thought was, you're getting notices on your phones. You're getting a little alert. Ping, ping, ping. You're going to, you're going to be out in 15 minutes. So.
You just have to add.
Right. That makes sense.
You don't get that when you're not using the meter?
Right.
Right? Okay. Agenda item B, consideration to approve the Parking Advisory Committee recommendation to implement a tiered validation program for parking. Counsel, do we have a motion? Motion by Hauser, which is to approve the validation tier proposal as presented. Thank you.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Any discussion, questions on the motion? City Clerk, the roll call.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. So motion passes. Moving on to item C, which is the request and the recommendation from the Parking Advisory Committee to hire a part-time parking enforcement officer. We saw the presentation. Counsel, do we have any motions, any actions on this item? Seeing no motions on this, do we, does anyone want to make any additional comments or feedback regarding this agenda item? Councilmember Hauser.
Sure. Thank you very much, chief. And I, I think you've made some very compelling arguments in support of this position. Candidly, I would like a little bit more time to think about this, but I also want to throw a curveball at you and I'm sorry for doing this to you. But you've been present for various meetings when we've talked about blight, okay? And the need for a particular officer to maybe step up and help out with enforcement. I would ask, and I don't know if I can ask you directly or if I ask through city manager or the mayor, to come back and if there's a position that could accomplish both of those goals, maybe meet your, your ask for part-time, for parking and also for part-time blight enforcement, for code enforcement. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if I'm throwing something out that you don't want to hear. But I'm thinking maybe that's a solution that at least I could maybe find a little bit more palatable to know that, hey, we're putting someone in here who's going to check off two boxes, two needs that we've got here.
I'm certain we can discuss it and, you know, I'd have to talk with the fire chief because there are a lot of duties and responsibilities involved with code enforcement or blight enforcement and also with the parking. I just wonder if an individual can manage that.
Right.
You know, because that's two totally different disciplines.
I get it. I get it. And that's why if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
We can always talk about it.
Yep. Thank you.
For, for my part, my thoughts and comments are kind of similar to Councilmember Hauser's and that, you know, at the Parking Advisory Committee meeting, I thought it was very interesting that the PAC voted for this because they are viewing this from a parking revenue standpoint or a parking system standpoint. But as the mayor and as counsel, I feel like we are viewing it as a citywide. We've got, we've got kind of some other issues, some other things that we want to make sure that we're addressing as well. And I would like to see a little bit more time to work. I think you have done a great job with the system, the parking system. We are really moving it forward. I'm just not ready to have 100%, 100% on this yet. We need, we need a little bit more time.
Sure.
And Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, just a, just a quick comment. And I, I agree with Adam and I think we're kind of working through the thought of all this additional time. But at the same time, how is it fair that if you go down Friday night, you got to pay to park and if you go down Saturday, you don't?
Well, people knew that till tonight.
Well, but I'm just saying is, people will figure it out, right? So.
Not every Saturday. Not every Saturday.
You'll never guess what's happening.
Do you want to roll the dice and break the law?
Right. But, but I mean, it's like, we want, you know, we have, you know, we have a system and then we're just saying, well, you know, we just won't, you know, we just don't care about it on a lot of days. So I mean, that's what I, thank you.
Can I just add something, counsel?
Sure.
I think we're stuck on this enforcement side. And I've been, I worked in a city that was heavy on enforcement. We're looking for someone that can maintenance this stuff. It's not just the meters. It's the parking decks. I get calls on Saturdays. I come in with my son. He's three years old. And we fixed the parking deck, so it's back in operation. We don't have somebody here that I can call and say, hey, can you go over there? It's not. It's not fair to the officers. They might be on a domestic call. We have a two-man minimum, they can't get there. The parking deck was closed on Saturday for seven hours because nobody knew how to change the ticket roll as easy as that. Nobody called me. So, I, I, we, it's not just enforcement, it's, it's giving the service out into the parking decks as well. I mean, we, we manage all this with 1.5 people and myself. And I, I'm busy, I, I work over my 40 hours a week. I come in on Saturdays to make the system work. And this is, we need help. We need help with the maintenance side of things. Forget the enforcement side. I'll take 10 hours, I'll take whatever, but we need help.
One more last comment.
Yep.
So, I agree with what was said on coming back maybe six months from now, or once things, because you've got, put a lot into play. But my only question would be, isn't there a way to change the schedule just to keep citizens guessing? And why couldn't you take a two to 10 shift on Wednesday and that person works on a Saturday? Maybe every other Saturday too, you know, Mayor Protem Bixson's comment, just so people, because now it is known that on Saturdays. And is there a possibility to shake up the schedule a little bit?
The one gentleman we've had, he's had the same schedule. How many years has he been here?
Uh, nine years.
Nine years, and, no, he's not gonna.
He's not gonna do Saturday.
And here's the thing, I have to be careful. I don't want to lose anybody.
Sure.
We have two great people working in the program. I don't, I just can't afford to lose one, because it takes months to get a replacement.
And no, no one wants to work Saturday, which I get.
And we're, we're doing our best, and, and actually, they work with us a lot, too. But to say, hey, you know, here on AFU, you're gonna do this, this, and this, I, I'm just, it's too much of a gamble at this point. And we'll do our best to make this work. It's not gonna be easy, but we'll do our best. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Councilmember King?
So, I mean, I, I really don't think it's fair to ask Officer Custer, is that, to come in on Saturdays, to come and fix the parking garage, having the parking garage closed for seven hours. This is, I didn't realize, you know, it's beyond the enforcement aspect of it. If it's gonna pay for itself, I'd almost rather approve this as a trial, and let's see if it works. And if we think for some reason that the enforcement's getting too much, we're hearing, you know, too many complaints within the city, then I would like to reconsider it. So, I'm willing to make a motion. I don't know if it'll get support, but I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Parking Advisory Committee to hire a part-time parking enforcement officer.
We have a motion by King.
I'll support it.
We have a support by Mayor Protem Bixson.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Hauser?
Can I clarify real quick? Uh, of 20 hours.
20 hours.
Okay. And, and for a time period, temporal, would it be like a six-month review process from, maybe come back December 31st? You know, it's June something, and, you know, at the end of the year, give us a report?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Councilmember Sage?
Can we put that in the motion? That it's six months.
Sure. I would make a, to amend the motion to reflect that.
Okay. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mayor. So, normally, we do this process at goals and objectives, right? So, I guess I'd feel more comfortable if I actually had some numbers in front of me. I mean, it's not that I don't believe that the, the process would just pay for itself, but I'd like to look at some numbers. So, if it could be delayed or reconsidered, so that I can actually look at the calculation, I'd appreciate that. I don't know what it is now. That's my only concern.
Councilmember King. Jones, why, I'm confusing you two tonight. Sorry about that.
You're interrupting a lot of Councilmembers.
It's too short, last name, sorry.
I guess my, my other concern is that you're gonna, you're gonna tell this hire upfront, you got six months. It's not really fair. You're hiring this person, letting us know.
It's a contract. It's a contract.
That it's not, I, I just don't like it being presented that way. That there's gonna be a six-month trial period, and if he doesn't earn revenue to pay for his salary, and we're back to earning revenue off of parking meters. And, I don't know. But I agree, I would agree with recycling back.
Yeah. I, yes, I, I would go back to, yes, I would love to see numbers. And, and, and I didn't know this additional information. That really does paint a different picture. That might have been, not to critique you, but that slide, that might have pushed this over.
It doesn't happen all the time, but I'm glad that he mentioned.
But, but.
But that is one of the problems that we do have.
If it's, if, if you're running into people, you know, your 40-hour work person having to come in on a Saturday, and, yeah. I mean, those are, those are different type of circumstances, but also, I'd love to see the numbers. And, and, yeah, understand how many times is.
Yeah, on Saturdays.
Yeah, how many times?
So, so for, for my part, so I really do not want us, as much as I appreciate your business focus on this, because we've made so many changes to this, I would not support this from a, a metric standpoint of covering the revenue, because that is gonna incentivize whoever you put in this to find more tickets. I would rather incentivize uptime in the system. Because at the PAC meeting, that's where the business owner said, I have mixed feelings on this, but it's important that we have uptime. Because that's frustration, that's friction, that's additional work for you. That is not good. So, you know, kind of what I'm hearing from council is, we're trying to get there to help you, but just we, we want to make sure, parking always has so many emotions and ties to it. We want to make sure that it's done appropriately. Councilmember Hauser?
And, and Mayor, just to be clear on my comment about the six-month review, I don't want you to think that unless they're hitting, hitting a certain metric and covering their costs and the program's dead, it was just more about, hey, is this working for you? Is this giving you what you need to cover the gap that you presented to, to city council this evening? I don't want you to think it's all about the dollar.
And, and as Dave stated, we struggle with the maintenance part. It's not the enforcement. We have no issues with enforcing. It's the maintenance and collections part. That is a big part of the, the whole operation. That's what I'm trying to get out. And that's why I put those things on it. Look at all the things that we're doing for our customers where other cities aren't. They're not doing half the stuff we're doing. But we do struggle every day with the maintenance part. There's, there's just no way.
Do you, do you have the ability, ability to track uptime or downtime on our meters?
Not really, no.
Because they're, they're multi-purpose meters. We have apartments parked in there, so.
Yep.
You know, it's gonna show zero hours, you know, zero usage for 12 hours.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, so, it sounds like we'll have you circle background with more information. In doing that analysis, I would just, if you can put Saturday, because that's our discussion, I think. How, how much, how many times are meters down on Saturday? What's the percent of time? And how often are you working over 40 hours a week because you're coming in on Saturdays to take care of the meters?
And let me clarify, I, I do, I, I don't ask for compensation, I just, just to make sure the system.
No, but if you're working over your 40 hours, that has something to do with our decision on hiring someone else. So, I think we need to have all that information that you just shared about your working overtime.
But to be clear, we do have a motion on the floor.
Right, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a comment.
Yep.
I mean, it's all, does it make sense to push this to the next meeting?
Well, we have to vote on the motion, though, I think.
We do, we do have to make a, we do have to vote on the motion.
Well, I mean, we could, we could amend it.
Can I amend my motion?
We can amend, yes.
Vote on this, to revisit this at the next meeting with more information?
You could, you can make a motion to amend it, to table it.
Okay. I would like to amend the motion to revisit this at a meeting in July, hopefully the next meeting, with a little bit more information.
So, the, the wording of that motion would be to table to a meeting in July.
Table, okay.
Motion by King?
Support. Oh, I'm sorry.
Support by Mayor Protem. Chief George, do you have, do you understand the data, the additional information we're looking for?
I think so. I mean, yeah. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
You know, because when, when we had, when we talked budget, we did talk numbers. And the recommendation at the Budget Committee, or the Budget Meeting, was to take this to PAC, and that's what we did on this last meeting. And that's, here, here we are today. So, yeah, we'll, I'll sit down with Dave and we'll, we'll discuss everything, all your concerns, and we'll put something together.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk, roll call.
Salvia.
Yes.
This is to table the motion to.
Yep.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we agreed to table it.
Thank you.
Isn't that fine government in action? But we agreed on that. All right, thank you. Moving to Item D, consideration to approve the cleaning, joint sealing, and recoating of the tennis courts. And I think there were people out there on the tennis courts even in this heat tonight. So, Nick Schaefer, you have the floor to tell us about the tennis courts.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, the tennis courts are in need of repair. The last repair was done about five years ago. We're hoping to get seven to 10. Unfortunately, we didn't hit that number. Gator surface coating, did duly repairs on the court back in 2020. Pretty much only contractor that we've had working on the courts. So, this evening, we're looking to get approval to have Gator coating, joint seal, and resurface the tennis courts in the amount of $49,000 and $500.
Thank you. City Council, any motions on this?
So moved.
That's a shocking motion by one of our most avid tennis players, the Mayor Protem Bixson. Motion by Bixson, support by Hauser. Any questions on the motion? Discussion?
I just.
Councilmember Jones?
I was at a meeting this afternoon, so we were able to chat about it already. But it just was a little alarming to me that every five years is $50,000 to redo the tennis courts. That just seems like, and Jason explained to me some of the reasons why, but it sounds like forever, every five years or so, four to five years, we're gonna have to spend $50,000, correct?
It's looking that way, yeah.
So, I guess that is what it is.
And so, from, from my standpoint, one of my asks on this is that we add into our capital improvement plan, the funding for this, because this, this was a bit of a surprise. So, if we could start building that into our, our budget models going forward.
Yeah, start setting aside, I'd agree.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
So, that was my question. This is not part of our budget.
No, this would be general fund dollars. This is general fund dollars.
And then, the other question being, when was the last time that tennis courts was actually, like, completely resurfaced? Because this was just filling cracks.
2020.
2020. 2020. Oh, this is, oh.
It's every, every five years.
It was totally resurfaced? Or we just filled cracks like this?
I think five years. Fully resurfaced. This is resurfaced, too. Yeah. Yeah.
This is.
So, really, it has to do with the water table underneath the, the tennis courts. And so, until they change the technology for tennis courts, we're gonna have this.
Okay. So, Nick clarified.
We didn't replace the tennis courts. We cracked, sealed them, and then coated, that's what they did.
Five years ago.
Had to rip that out.
It's been, I, I would say it's been for the complete tear-out of, you know, start from scratch, it's probably been 15 to 20 years.
Four years.
So, these have been, so it's $50,000 to patch it every.
Every five years, yeah.
And, and this seems quicker than usual. So, maybe it's starting to.
For fail. Any other?
The what?
Councilmember Sage?
And as we're considering the budgeting for this expense, let's not forget, when we have a skate park, it's not gonna be perfect forever. So, we're gonna need to start budgeting for that as well.
Yep. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item E, this is consideration to award a contract to resurface and stripe city parking lots, number four, which is, I can't read my notes there. And parking lot 10, this one I know is in the Civic Center area, to Mizraa Paving LLC, frequently known as Hutch, for the amount of $176,799. And this is out of the parking fund, correct?
Mm-hmm. You nailed it.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to say about it, Nick?
Really? Really, I think you summed it up perfectly. Lot four is over at Pine and Third.
Pine and Third.
Right.
I think that's what you were looking for.
Yep. Council? Councilmember Trent?
I have to ask to recuse myself again. You seem to like this one.
Yep.
Paver, paving company?
Okay, so we need a motion to.
I will make a motion to permit Councilperson Trent to recuse herself from this agenda item.
Motion by Hauser, support by Jones. City Clerk, the roll call.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. You're excused. And regarding this, do we have a motion? Councilmember King, no?
Question. Do you want me to wait?
Then I'll make the motion.
Motion by Sage.
To approve in the amount of $176,799 out of the Capital Control Parking Lot Improvement Fund for lots four and 10.
Motion by Sage. Support by Jones. Questions on the motion?
Is Mizraa formerly known as Bowen?
As Bowen, that's what it was.
Bowen.
Okay, so Hutch and Mizra are two different companies here that are doing these quotes. Did we, I know that we felt like we were getting really good pricing for some work that they're doing on the east side. I also know that oil prices have been like lower than in prior, you know, years. I'm just curious, have we gone out and gotten new bids to confirm?
Very good question. So we actually gave these specs to four contractors. Only three came back, obviously, two currently here. One was another company, it was double. Fourth one didn't even give us a number.
Okay, so these are good numbers.
And we reached out to them twice, just to get a number from them. So very good question.
Thank you.
City Clerk, the roll call.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Sage, sorry, Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
And Trent Epstein?
Epstein.
Thank you, motion passes. Item F is consideration to approve a one-year renewal of the contract with HydroCorp. This is for Cross Connections in the amount of $54,264. Nick Schaefer, you're at the podium, and I think there's a correction to the ledger item on this one.
There will be, yes. And yeah, we'll be coming out of the water fund, not the parking.
Okay. That's different funds. Those are dedicated funds.
I'm in a full time.
Council, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Trent?
I'll make a motion to approve a one-year renewal of the contract with HydroCorp for Cross Connection in the amount of $54,264.
Thank you. Motion by Trent.
Support.
Support by Hauser. Any other discussions or questions? Councilmember King?
I'm just curious, do we always do a one-year contract with them? And is there any benefit that we would get from looking at a longer term?
Another good question. The reason we're doing a one-year is because next year, the commercial industrial is going to be up. That is a two-year, that way we get them on the same schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then on this, the question I have is the Cross Connection program, how is this going? Is this completing through the entire city's neighborhoods with this one year?
Yep, so this is a residential, and it's going very well, even a short time maybe. Here, and talking to Cory and Steve, and yeah, very few calls and concerns. You know, a couple of people still asking, what are you doing? Why do you need to do it? That sort of thing, more the educational side. Other than that, it's going very well.
Good. City Clerk, the roll call.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, a public service announcement, and Nick to salute to it. At my own house, we didn't see the first letter. I'll say Kim didn't. So the second notice went out, it says, we're really serious about this. So a lot of people called the city manager's office, like, is this a real thing? And it's a state regulated thing. And we want you to explain why you're doing it. It's every five years, we have to do it. So anybody that got a second letter has not followed up. And even if you don't use your irrigation system, if it's tied into the system, that's a potential problem. It takes them, it's, I called the contractors, $129, good for five years. They come out, check this meter, make sure it's right, peace of mind. So anybody watching, it's a real thing. We're not trying to make it, we don't make any money on this. It's just to protect the water system. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Item G, I think we've got a couple of housekeeping items here. This is consideration of a request to set the public hearing to reprogram our community development block grant funds from 2024. I see Jason approaching.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, so a couple of meetings ago, we brought to you the pathway paving in the municipal park using the CDBG money. So I talked to the county last week, and they informed us that we need to reprogram 23 and 24 funds. They were originally allocated to Memorial Grove. So we just need to reallocate those. So tonight, what I'm looking for is to set public hearings for 23 and for 24, hopefully for the next meeting, which will be July 14th. At that point, we can hold the public hearing and then request to approve the resolution for reprogramming. And then I can submit all of the paperwork to the county. We should still be able to get the paving done towards the end of the summer.
So this isn't new funds, this is just fixing which year we're going to use the funds?
Correct.
Great. Council?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, support by Trent. Any other discussion? King?
I noticed with the reconstruction of Memorial Grove and the addition of the playground and then the sidewalks, that the ramp onto Greg Street was closed off at the end of the street there. So there used to be, the sidewalk used to allow like a handicap access. And there were actually two handicap parking spaces at the end of Greg Street. Looks like those have been eliminated, and that ramp's no longer there. I will just say that when you are coming off of the trail, if you're on a bike, you're now forced onto the sidewalk with a lot of pedestrians, you know, you don't have an easy way to get off the trail and onto the streets. It causes a lot of congestion there. I wish that would have been kept open. I don't know that I knew that that was part of the plan. I don't know if there's any.
Jason, can you answer? You like a little bit of.
He's owning it, all right.
For engineering standards, you don't, you don't chain traffic into the roadway. They're supposed to stay on the sidewalks. And those are not valid as handicap parking spaces in that big curve. My next approach is going to be get rid of that big curve. I'm going to make that road one solid sweep, get rid of that, make it all grass. And that was recommendation from engineering to get that out of there.
I, before that happens, can you consult with the school there? There is a lot of traffic, and that routinely gets used for extra parking and a lot of people coming in and out of there.
Even the police chief said that people should be parked there.
Probably not legal, but.
It's not legal. It's definitely not handicap, for sure. So, and then if you haven't been noticing during our road projects and things, we have little paths that go to the roadway from the residential or from just a sidewalk in the mid-block where we're moving all those because you're potentially, if you're a blind person, don't know that you're stepping out into the middle of the road, mid-block. You're not at a corner or somewhere else. You're not supposed to be directing people into the middle of the road.
Okay.
It's my fault.
All right. Thank you. City Clerk, the roll call, please. Or do you have a, yes?
For clarification, is this motion for both items G and H? Are we doing them separately?
Can we do them together?
Yeah.
All right. Maker of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so this is for items G and H, to set the public hearing for our next city council meeting. City Clerk, the roll call.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Both motions pass, or the motion passes for both items. Moving on to reports from our boards and commissions. So item A is a report from the retirement board. Councilmember Hauser?
Thank you, Mayor. So we had our meeting on May 28, 2025. I am pleased to report that the OPEB, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits, is financially healthy and should stay that way for foreseeable future. And just to be clear, OPEB, these are the dollars that the city has set aside for healthcare for our retired city employees. Just a couple of highlights, the OPEB is currently overfunded by more than $5 million. That's using the most recent fiscal year data as of June 30th, 2024. In addition, the funded ratio is over 150%. And 100% means the city has enough money to pay all the benefits. So we've exceeded that. And it's important to mention that OPEB could be $5 million overfunded in dollar terms, but only 105% funded in percentage terms. So there's some significance there to have that number being 150%. And finally, even though there's been some instability in the market as of late, the OPEB has still managed to gain over $540,000 in investment earnings versus $106,000 in outflows. And that's as of June 6, 2025. So the fund continues to grow and remain very healthy. And again, these are the dollars that the city has set aside for healthcare for our retired city employees. And then very briefly, I'm just going to touch on the pension amounts. As of May 23, 2025, the city has nearly $15 million in pension trust that's deposited. There's another amount that's invested with MERS. However, the state, or MERS doesn't really publish that number, so I can't really tell you what that is. But there's another $6.4 million pension trust invested as well. So the long story made very short is that the OPEB is in a very good position, and it demonstrates that we have taken care and continue to take care of our retired city employees. That's the update.
Thank you, great report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, item B, Principal Shopping District. Councilmember Jones?
We met on June 4th, and lots going on. I'm just going to reel through everything going on. Deckart was a great success. There were 350 boards and 50 businesses. Thirty-two boards were sold, and they ranged from $25 to $300. So it was a great success. They still have boards at their office for sale. Maker's Mark was this past weekend. It was extremely hot, a little bit of rain to start. But if anyone went, it was a good, everybody, every vendor I talked to was very happy to be there. So it was, it was well done and lots of participation. The DDA did a survey that day about art, correct? Do you know, do you want to say more about that?
It's a dot where people.
Dotmocracy.
Thank you. Dotmo, dotmo, say it again.
Dotmocracy.
Right, so folks got to give their concepts of what they would like to see as we like a community-wide art. So that was their first shot in.
Which was great. She said that was very successful, and they are trying to put together a community art program. Farmers Market is doing well. There's a few vendor logistics they're still trying to work out, but so far, so good. Summer Kits went out to all the businesses downtown with sidewalk sale information movies and Dancing in the Street and the Explorers Club. I think that's it. Anything else?
Thank you. Next is the, stays with you, Councilmember Jones, the Cemetery Advisory Board.
Okay. We met on June 10th. I don't know if Jason wants to add anything, but they have, they're completely done with tearing out that road so that they could have about 75, 74 monument spots. It's going, it hasn't been staked out yet for those spots, but that's approximately what will be there. There is still a lot of discussion about the cemetery fence. I think it's kind of on hold right now. It's a lot of expense to do the fence, and there is fundraising that has been done. There's $50,000 at the foundation to start that. So we're just still in discussions basically about what to do about the fence because it's quite an investment, even with it being fundraising investment. So to be continued, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jones. I did want to comment, since we also were talking about fund balance. So the cemetery does have a fund balance. It's $840,000. And then in our budget, we do have $100,000 that comes from the general fund to cover the cost of maintenance in the cemetery. So I know there is ongoing discussion on the fence and the gates. The signs in particular are, to me, something that I really think we need to have updated, if not for America 250 something. So I, again, with those two numbers in mind, I think maybe there needs to be some discussion at goals and objectives or budget or something. But again, I'd like to have more discussion on that.
I agree. And that's sort of what I told the committee, is I said, this would be maybe a discussion for next year's budget. This year's budget's already been decided, but along the way, we can talk more about it. So thank you for that input.
Yep. Paint Creek Trailways, Councilmember Sage, tell us about Bridge 31.7.
Okay, we can start with that. So we're working on getting the last two documents loaded into the DNR site. There are a few of the officers of the Trailway Commission that would like to just have an informal call with the city's finance team, just to make sure we're all in lockstep on that. So I'll set that up with Anthony and Marcy. We did make some traction on actually identifying three qualified candidates for the trail manager position. So we will be interviewing those. And the way the trailway's set up, each member unit in the interlocal agreement pays for administration and operations of the trail office as well as the Oakland County Sheriff Mounted Patrol. So the mounted patrol is based on, it's allocated based on your percent of mileage on the nine-mile trail. They renegotiated our contract, and of course, it went up. Went up 6% from last year. It'll be a 9% increase in '26, another 9% in '27. But what we did decide, based on the amount of usage that we've actually contracted with them, we're going to take our contract from 500 hours down to 425 hours a year. And it's primarily up at the north end of the trail that most of the mounted activity is. So we're going to actually save some money. So I'll send the invoice to Anthony and Marcy on that. And then the last item was, we actually had to go into closed session that we have a potential land donation opportunity up at the north end of the trail. So I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you. Good work. Report from the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority, Councilmember King?
Yeah, a few things. We received our audit report from Raymond Robson, very clean audit report. No concerns noted. Management and staff worked really well with auditors. So very happy to see that it was a clean report. We are also going to be working on our budgeting for the next three years. In 2024, we put about, I think, $80,000 back into the fund balance. Part of the reason was because some capital projects did not get completed, and they'll carry over into this year. So we expect to deplete that money again, but it did go back in. We approved the salary recommendations for annual evaluations and wage adjustments as a committee or as a board. We also approved a contract with McKenna and Associates to do a five-year master plan of services. One, this can allow us to apply for grants and other things as organizations. So it's needed from that standpoint. And I think will also be really interesting and give us an idea of, are we meeting the community's needs? Are there other things that we should be addressing? So really excited for that. And from a revenue standpoint, we are, for 2025, we're outpacing revenue by about $21,000 per month. June was our highest revenue total since COVID, when we were only halfway through the month. So we're doing really well there. Quite a few events. There was, or this week, which unfortunately, I'm going to be in Chicago, so I'm going to miss it. But there is a ribbon cutting for the hammock park. They just redid the paved, the asphalt behind the building. It looks so much better. It was really junky. They worked, I think, with the pollinators and Maryland on a beautiful butterfly pollinator garden there. It looks really wonderful. There's been some new additions, aside from the hammocks, some other kind of outdoor toys and things that people can use. Some of it, you might have to go in and check out like the parts to it. But it's a really wonderful space. My kids and I have gotten a chance to enjoy it. But it's going to be all revealed on Thursday this week, or on Wednesday, the 26th. They also hosted the first Bites and Beats at the Lions Park. Really incredible turnout, I think over 300 people. So it was a really nice evening for that. There's one coming up on, I apologize, the Hammock Ribbon Cutting is June 25th, Wednesday. The next Bites, Beats, and Eats, or Bites and Beats by the Paint Creek is the 26th, as well as July 10th. Those are the next two. On June 27th and July 11th, there are movies in the park. First one's at North Hill, and July 11th is at Bourne and Park. And then that is it. So a lot of exciting things. And then I will also give a plug because this Thursday as well is Music in the Park in the Rochester Park, so.
Lots of music opportunities on Thursday night.
Yep.
Absolutely. Next report out is for the City Beautiful Commission. Number Jones, back to you.
Back to me? We met on June 11th, and this is the second time we met outside. So we're using that little picnic table out there to be outdoorsy. And we have, this is the first commission where there's been student involvement. And so we have two students, and the one has just done an extremely good job. We're very happy to have students involved. And what they are working on now is the raised beds that they're going to do by the All Abilities Park. And Emma, who is the student, put together a great plan for the sensory garden for full sun and part sun. And they went the other night, and they kind of mapped out where it was going to go. There'll be a shade structure. So that's very exciting that's going on. The nature sounds amplifier is in motion. We're waiting to get a plan for that. And I'm going to have that wonderful scout come in front of the city council so he can share what his plan's going to be for that. It'll be good experience for him. Working on postcards that we're going to have available to any of our events or that will be available for new people moving into the area. I think that's it. Is that it? There's a lot going on.
Great. Happy to hear, happy to hear about the student involvement. That's great.
She's really done an amazing job. And we kind of gave her the sensory gardens, and she just ran with it. So I mean, it's great. And we've talked.
Yep.
It's one of the things we're trying to do. Let's get some more students involved in our committees and commissions and boards.
Awesome. Awesome. Councilmember Trent, we've got the Downtown Development Authority.
Yes, we met last Wednesday, June 18th. And we chose officers, this year's officers would be Ben Giovinelli will continue to be the chair. Tanya Carsten is, no, wait a minute, Tony Lapuma.
Change. No change to the board.
There's no change.
Tony Lapuma. I have my first names because I know them. Tony Lapuma is staying as a
vice chair, and Tanya Carsten is staying as secretary. City Manager Banda gave a very robust economic development update. And anyone that wants to see it is more than welcome to go to RochesterMI.org to webcast and look up last week's Wednesday, June 18th meeting, and you will hear all about it. Main Street Oakland County Annual Event was held at the Roxy on June 12th. I'm sorry I couldn't make it. I had another engagement. But I've been to many of them, and they were always very good. Sounded like this one was exceptional. It looks like the owner, Glenn, I don't know his last name, donated the venue. Ben Giovinelli got Volunteer of the Year Award for all of Oakland County Main Street.
All of Oakland County Main Street.
Wow. That's amazing.
There were a lot of nominations.
Wow.
Three awards for Rochester.
Chris Kringle won the award of Community Event of the Year, Small Biz Innovation of the Year. Home Bakery won because of the viral cake of Aman Raw St. Brown, and designed by Heather Taco, who owns the home bakery. And then there was an award of City of Rochester being 25 years participating in the Main Street Oakland County program. And for that...
That was Kristi Travarro, who got recognized as DDA Director for the longest longevity of 25 years.
Whoops.
Average tenure is three years for a DDA Director.
Wow, I kind of missed that one, huh? All right.
I know. You weren't at the event, so that's why.
Oh, thanks for that. I guess I could have been paying better attention. So anyway, I got this right. $2,400 check was written to the DDA for, I guess, all these awards?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. So there is also, going on to talking about homes in Rochester, there's a possibility that a list of our City of Rochester buildings that are over 50 years old will be on the website so that they can get their historical plaques from the Historical Commission of the City of Rochester. That was Don Sinkowitz, a liaison, who gave that update to the Rochester Historical Commission. Okay, construction, oh, here we go, Gram update, construction barriers are up. We are waiting on bids to come in. They're coming in any minute. Just wanted you guys to know that. Don't wait up tonight because they won't come in tonight. Summer Foot Patrol in downtown was approved because that is popular, not popular, but it was so successful last year. And it was a great Makers Market on Saturday. And I went, and they had a lot of great vendor makers there with their everything from jewelry to cookies to food to, I don't know, all sorts of, oh, and even Paul Hague was there. I got to give him, my hat's off to Paul Hague. There he was with his jewelry. Lots of jewelry. So that's it.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything?
Lots happening in the DDA, as always. Yeah, very good. Moving on to general and miscellaneous, anything else from the fire chief, back row, Jason? Jason, nope. City Clerk?
Just an election nugget. Oakland Township has scheduled a special election on August 5th on the primary date, specifically for the library millage proposal. And because they contract with Oakland County for early voting, they're making them have the early voting. So there will be early voting going on at the library for a library millage, which I'm sure is going to create some questions. So.
And that's all legit. And that's all legit. That can happen.
Absolutely. And I'm, we'll make sure we put information on our election page that we are not having an election, and early voting is not ours. But that's, that's what we can, we're still going to get questions. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Manager?
Just a couple of things. Started off wet this weekend, but we got through the Pride Event. Makers Market, obviously, is very active in town. Park was hopping, as always. Today, they treated the pond. It's tough when it's this hot and stagnant. Just quickly, people, we get a lot of calls about this, why is there stuff in the pond? So there's a pipe in the river that we can open up to push water through the pond, block the outlet, get cold water in to keep the fish going, keep them alive and oxygenated. But when it's that low, even the pipe in the river, the water's below that. So it takes a little bit of effort. Today, Lake Pro was out, cleaned it all out, we're good to go. So that's great. Just so everybody knows, Marcy, the chiefs and I were in contact going into this weekend about if we needed cooling stations, if there's a possibility. So we're monitoring that the whole weekend. So we were set up if we needed to. Fortunately, I think we're going to get through it tomorrow. No need, but we were on it. So just in case that was necessary, we were ready to mobilize for that if we needed to. So that's it.
Thank you. City Attorney?
No, thank you.
Councilmember King?
I'll just say it was really great to see all the people out this weekend despite the heat at Makers Market and in the park. So just wonderful to see the city turnout, but it was hot.
Great. I'm going to come back to you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Jones?
Just a couple of quick things. I have a meeting with the RCS Superintendent, Mr. Russo, on July 7th, just to talk, just to keep that connection going with the city, and to talk about the 501 building, because there's been rumblings about that. So to get some clarification about that.
Anything to update us on?
Nothing yet.
Okay.
Hopefully, at this meeting, I'll have a better understanding, because I think they're making some decisions by fall, it sounds like. He's doing a presentation to the Board of Education about what his thoughts are. The skate park is moving along. We had another meeting today, trying to fine tune the, getting all the plans going so we can get a date to start. As Councilmember King said, Music in the Park was a grand success. Mayor Salvia and I both stopped by for a little bit before we went to the Main Street event. And I'm excited about this Thursday being the next one. They, we probably had to tweak a few things, but it was well attended. And it'll be interesting this year with having both at the same time to see how the crowds go. But you could hear the music. When I came out of Main Street, I could hear the music from Bites and Eats, and it was, it's very exciting. And then finally, I just want to compliment Jason, working with him on the skate park closer and on the cemetery, and even what Councilmember King talked about. He always keeps pedestrians in mind in a very cool way. I think that's important in his job, and I just want him to know that that is noticed, how much he thinks through such things. So thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I wanted to thank Mayor Salvia and Councilmember Jones for attending the tree school tour at Johnson Nature Center. We learned a lot from Alan Jaris on June 17th. He is the Bauer School Farm and Johnson Center Director, and he took along a lot of time with us to show us how the tree school works. And I really enjoyed it, and I know you guys did too. Also, I want to thank our Chairperson of City Beautiful Commission and Jessica Klausert, who is a board member as well, who joined me on the Southern Meadow on the first hottest day of the year at 10:00 a.m. at the municipal park. And it is a quarter acre that we were, we began to plant native plants in, myself as well. And we are going to enlist Colin Pettit to help us some more with that. I call it a recogdiscence mission as sweat was pouring down. We got a lot, we got some things done, actually quite a bit. And also, I attended the Oakland Tourism Workshop at the CAF Barn on June 17th at Van Hugheson Farm, and that was really well done. Just basically, it's one of those workshops where you have little, you go from table to table, giving your input on what you think of tourism, what you would like to see in Oakland County. Then they ask you for your opinion. And I would say there was one where they had little, you could put little flags around locations in the area where you go. And Rochester, Rochester Hills was just loaded up with flags. I got a picture of it. And I, how was it, today, I listened to, and I encourage everyone to do it, Live with the League, Live with the Municipal, Michigan Municipal League, from 12 to 1 every other week on Zoom. They will give a rundown of all the bills that are coming in front of the legislature, which is 4,000, that go through the, them every year. And they vet them, and then they give their opinion. So anybody wants to do it, it's there. It should be in your inbox. But if not, just contact me. I will send the link.
That's great.
That's all. That's all I did.
Thank you. Councilmember Hauser?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Wow, okay. Mayor Proton?
Yes, I just have one thing. We had the Summer Soiree Friday at the OPC.
Oh, yeah.
It was sold out. It was a success. The mayor was there as well. And it's for a good cause, Meals on Wheels. And it was crowded, and the OPC has really looked good, I thought, that night. The band was good. So it was an excellent fundraiser. So thank you.
Awesome. It was. It was. There it was. For my part, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, one of the topics that I've been having a lot of conversation with residents and administration, and the BLIT Committee on, is our process for enforcement for that. I think there are a, I'm going to say a handful of properties that really need focus. And so I've asked administration, city manager's going to comment on this as well, to really energize and reinvigorate our See Click Fix or Rochester Works process, to allow us to use that for, I'll say, improved enforcement. So we have Jason on staff, who I so appreciate his skill set and his detail. And so he will be, and this is for communication purposes, he will be, if you put something in See Click Fix, it's going to hit Jason's desk, his radar. He is then going to be responsible to review those internally and make sure they are being addressed, make sure there's communication going back. I have also asked if he could come to a city council meeting in the next 30 to 45 days and show us the process, see how it looks. I went into See Click Fix and just took a look at some things. I know he closed some things that have been in there for a number, I'll say, of years. So there's still about 55 items in there. But again, this is the process that we're, I really feel like I want the BLIT Committee in parallel to continue to look at the ordinance. But I really feel like we need to also focus on our process. So City Manager, can you just make any additional comments or maybe echo what I just said? Because again, I want all channels communicating the same thing.
Yeah, I would echo it 100%. So this goes back 15 years when we had Rochester Works, and we tried different ways to do this. And nobody really owned it. It was, we didn't get a lot of complaints, so we didn't, nobody really owned it. Knowing that, again, not making excuses, but the 55 that are in there, some of them, we struggle with ourselves. It would be, there is a catch basin that's not fixed. But the curb next to it is broken. And some of these, you can't close. And we tell, what we didn't put on our reports were, this is an ongoing issue. We know the curbs on the east side are failing. So to make sure we didn't lose track of them, the former DPW Director would keep those open. So it looks like nothing was happening, but they're aware of them. We might respond back to the person that sent it in and say, just so you know, this is going to stay open for years, possibly, so we don't forget about it. Not the most efficient way to do it. So Jason literally went out and drove, after you guys talked a little bit, looked at them, while we're going to close out, while we can close out. We will note clearly ones that aren't closed out, why they're not closed out, whether they're in our CIP, they're in our master asset plan. We'll make sure people understand. But we really, really want to push that See Click Fix. And it's got five different ways to get at it. So if you just went in, how do I report a problem? It will go to that link. You go right to See Click Fix. You can go to Rochester Works. So we're going to, in the newsletter, there's a whole article coming out about, this is how you use it. I said, every meeting, we have to remind folks, use that. We want them to. It holds us responsible to make sure that we're following up on any complaints. For instance, the gentleman tonight, we know all the homes on the east side that have issues. There's a story behind everyone. Chief John probably was, I want to come up. He can answer all of those. It doesn't necessarily satisfy the people that think this is the level that you should take care of. We have an attorney that advises us how far we can go. These, many are in court. The gentleman on university, if you say that person's name to Attorney Krot, there's smoke coming out of his ears. Some people do not cooperate, even when they go to the judge and they have edicts against them, they still defy. So again, our job is to get compliance. We will stay on it. We're never, nothing will get overlooked. Jason is all over it, and staff together reports, and then follows up. So if he assigns somebody, whether it's to Jason Dickinson, whether it's to Carolyn Parks, or Colin, or the Police Department, or the Fire Department, there will be follow-up. And we feel the tool is there. Now we have to educate people how to use it, and we're going to use it. And we welcome it because it helps that communication line with our community. They know, we hear them. We recognize it, and then we can report back what we find out.
Excellent. Councilmember King?
Can I make a request? So we have the Rochester Works app. I just recently learned about it. I have lived here since, you know, 2013 is when I moved back. I've been involved in the council, and I'm planning. And I somehow didn't really know about this, but I was asking about communication recently, and somebody shared it with me. But maybe in the next, like, newsletter, we could put...
Oh, yeah. There's a whole page.
Put like a QR code or some, yes, people to go to it?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Yeah. And I will say this, in the past, it has not been managed. So it was, you'd put it in, and then it would be a black hole. And so this is, we're changing the decks, clearing the decks, and we just want everyone to use it. And it's a good tool, as long as it's used. Okay. Second thing I have is regarding the Asset Management Committee meeting. So first off, I want to thank Roy Knizny, who has served on the Asset Management Committee meetings back when it was infrastructure. So over 10 years, I want to thank him for his service on that. He has represented the east side on that, and at this time, he says he needs to focus on his family. So I am going to appoint an east two, I'm going to appoint two residents to the asset management. In the past, we had one. We have three council members, and we had one resident. We're going to appoint two. The reason being is, we talk about water and water rates and infrastructure projects. So I want one from the east side and one from the west side. We have two water systems. So for, these are two-year terms. So for the east side, I would like to appoint Christine Fend. She lives at 1164 Terra Lane. And for the west side, I'd like to appoint Mike Hathaway. He lives at 1111 Hemlock. And both of these will be for two-year terms. Both of them are active in their HOAs. So again, this is another one of my goals, to increase communications with the HOAs. They're often hear about things before even council doss or city administration. And I also, in really public transparency, I want to note that I am not appointing two, actually, there are three members who are on the ballot, who also are involved in our HOAs, and I'm not appointing them to these positions, because I feel like that would be a public, I'm sorry, a political appointment. And I do not want it to appear political in any way, shape, or form. So we will have an east and west side, and there are people who are not on the ballot. So with that, I need a motion to go into closed session with no intent returned. Oh, wait. How about any other public comment tonight?
On the click to fix, which could be anybody with any type of complaint. Okay, is that, you can file a FOIA on it then? You can actually find out who complained? Details?
No, because they can do anonymous.
Is that always good?
Many of them are submitted anonymously, so we never know who submits.
Okay, so that's all, like, you're never going to know?
If they don't want.
If they don't, if they don't want to.
They don't want follow-up.
Okay, so I could go into it, and anything I, and someone could do whatever they want?
You do.
Okay. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I think it's only because of what we've seen in our area. I know, I don't know if that would be good. That's what I would say. I think in most cases, it can probably work if it's something small. But quite frankly, I don't know. I know what we went through for no reason at all, and I still have files this thick, and the embellishments, and everything that was said and done was very wrong. And had we been up on it, we probably would have just nipped it in the bud with an attorney and been done. So that's, my only question is, I think anybody sometimes should have the right to find out who's complaining or what the complaint is. Because if not, people become suspect, and that can also lead to problems. And we had that happen in our area. So I don't know, but it doesn't involve me at this point. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. I think there's going to be a lot of work on this process.
I hope so.
So, thank you.
And good luck for next fiscal year.
Any other public comment tonight? All right. So I need a motion to go in closed session. This is for City Clerk O'Connor's periodic evaluation.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for Leanne O'Connor's periodic evaluation.
With no intent to return.
With no intent to return. We're not coming back.
Motion by Hauser, support by Trent. City Clerk, the roll call?
Salvia?
Yes.
Bigson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. We'll take like a two-minute break here.